Good evening, Sarito residents and the member of our community. I call to the order the July 25th meeting, regular city council and the success agency this evening. invocation will be led by Mike Valentine, captain of Sarito's station and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Sarito's youth soccer league team, Rocky One Division, Little Rascals. May you all rise.
Mayor Solanke, Mayor Protem Vo, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Burrows, Councilmember Yokayama. Good evening. I just want you to know it's really a privilege for me to be able to stand here tonight, to know that I can raise you up in God's, to be in God's hands and have His Spirit to come and be in this place and to pray for the people who are here and that God can have His hand in our city. And I just want to thank you, it is really a privilege. But I find that it's not only a privilege, but it is actually a requirement on my side as a Christian to pray for you. Timothy, First Timothy 2 tells me that I'm supposed to pray for those that God has lifted up and put in places like yours. So I just want you to know it, it is a blessing and yet it is an obligation. And right now, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with humble hearts, seeking your guidance and wisdom for the leaders of the city of Saritos and their council, their city staff, law enforcement and all the in attendance here tonight. We ask that you bless them with discernment and integrity as they make decisions that impact our community. Grant them the courage to lead with compassion and the strength to serve with humility. Lord, we pray for unity and cooperation among the council members that they may work together for the common good. Help them to listen to the needs of all residents and to act justly and fairly in all matters. We pray their actions reflect your love and righteousness, bringing peace and prosperity to our city. We also lift up the citizens of Saritos, asking your blessings upon them. May they feel your presence and that they would feel inspired to contribute positively and with peace to our community. In your name, Lord, we pray. Amen.
Can we lower that? That's it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and to the free and innocent for all.
Thank you, thank you all. Can we have, wait a minute. Can we have one by one if they can just give their names and the age? You'd like to.
Hi, my name is Gabby.
That's okay.
My name is Evelyn.
My name is Miguel.
My name is Miguel.
My name is Ireland.
My name is Justin.
My name is Erin.
My name is Rafi.
All right, thank you all very much, thank you. I'm excited. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please conduct the roll call?
Council and agency member Barrows.
Present.
Council and agency member Johnson.
Present.
Council and agency member Yokayama.
Here.
Mayor Protem and Vice Chair Vo.
Present.
Mayor and Chair Solanke.
Present.
Okay. Next, thank you for your attendance at tonight's meeting. State law and our local rules do not support the use of profanity, hateful speech or conduct that disturb the conduct of this city business meeting. If necessary, I will issue an initial warning and call to recess to restore order. After that, the chambers may be cleared if disturbance continue. Next, I will call upon the city clerk to provide additional information concerning public comments.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. The following comments pertain to all public comment periods on tonight's agenda. Once I read this paragraph, we will then be returning to our presentations. Prior to the meeting, the council and agency received full text unredacted copies of the five written comments submitted for this meeting by the deadline listed on the agenda. Requests for copies of written comments can be made to the office of the city clerk treasurer during regular business hours. The mayor will open public comments at the appropriate times on the agenda. Please be prepared to approach the podium and begin your comments at the time you are called. Public comments should be directed to the city council and made only from the podium during your turn. Please respect each speaker and refrain from any disruptive behavior or speech during their comment time. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. This concludes the public comment information for this meeting and the meeting is returned to the mayor for presentations.
Thank you. At this time, I'll move the item to 5A, the Business Spotlight, Better Beverage Inc. The city of Saritos showcased a local business every month to foster pride in Saritos, thriving business community and strong local economy. A proclamation will be presented to Better Beverage Inc. for being selected as a part of the city's business spotlight recognition program. Since 1946, Better Beverages Inc. has been serving the carbonic gas and fountain syrup needs of Southern California restaurant and hospitality community. This family-owned business specializing in beverage, gas delivery, started as one of main operation and has grown to two distribution facility. Employed 40 employees in 1970, Better Beverage Inc. main facility was opened in Saritos, providing service to over 3,000 customers located in Los Angeles, Orange, Riverside and San Bernardino counties, as well as a part of Ventura and San Diego counties. Better Beverage Inc. provides sales, leasing, installation and general service for commercial beverage equipment, including CO2 system, bulk CO2 system, CO2 alarm, nitrogen generator, soda fountains, juice system and frozen beverages system. Additionally, Better Beverage Inc. offers delivery service for full range of bag in box, soda, juice, mixed syrup and frozen beverages syrup. Better Beverage Inc. employs professionally, factory-trained service technician to assist their customer and strive to offer customer extraordinary value and unmatched customer service. Better Beverage Inc. located at 10624 Midway Avenue, Saritos, California, 90703. Their phone number is 800-344-5219 and their website is www.betterbeverage.com. With that, I will go to the presentation area. Good evening, welcome, congratulations. I would like to, I know I said many things, I would like, would you like to add anything else? Or introduce your staff or your company?
Sure. We're very honored to be here tonight and receive this award for a couple of reasons. Number one, to actually be recognized and receive the award, but also to be in this part of Saritos. If you knew the address, 10624 Midway Avenue, we're in a very exclusive part of Saritos over by the Ironwood Golf Course that not many people get to. So we're happy to be over in this part of town. The mayor did a very good job of explaining what we do. That's basically when somebody asked me what we do and I kind of give that same speech. Since 1946, my grandfather started in the beverage dispensing equipment business. My dad took over at some point. In 1970, we bought the building there in Saritos on Midway. My brother Michael works there. My youngest son Stuart works for us now. We have approximately 40 other, 40 employees. I've got Carrie, Carl and Yolanda with me. And I brought these people here today because they're key to our success. It's not just me or my dad or anybody, it's our whole family of 40. What we really do is to make it simple is when you go buy a soda and it has those bubbles in it, the carbonation, that's what we do. We sell the gas that puts those bubbles in the soda and we service nearly every McDonald's, In-N-Out Burger, Chick-fil-A, Del Taco and lots of mom and pop restaurants all throughout Southern California, right there from Saritos. So, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Congratulations, I would like to have all the, if you can join him and also my council colleague can join for a photo op.
Congratulations, guys.
Five photos. On the count of three, ready, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, four, one, two, five.
Thanks so much.
Congratulations. Next we have is the public comments. I have a few cards here. Madam City Clerk, is anyone else has sent a written correspondence?
We did read that we received five pieces of written correspondence and they were delivered to the city council earlier today.
Thank you. So with that, I'll call on Teddy Lloyd.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, good evening. Thank you very much, I have the opportunity to speak with you. Today, I just come to bring the attention for the city council regarding a letter that I received from the city of Saritos stating there's some quote-unquote "damage" made to Sunshine Park Basketball Court. And I personally don't see any damages made and I would like to request an opportunity perhaps to meet with any one of the city council members to go and see, otherwise it would be some confusions. And then also, the city of Saritos sent me a bill for $7,400 for so-called damage without stating what damage. I have not seen any damage, only stating that because of some tape put down to simulate a pickleball court. As it turned out, I'm not, there are other people, they put it there even during the pandemic. So, in order to solve this confusion on anything with the city staff, would it be possible for me to get an opportunity to have any of the city council members? Because I do know the city council, they speak for the residents. I'm a resident of the city of Saritos for many, many years. So therefore, the only thing I can come up with is perhaps the court that needs to be resurfaced. And I remember I spoke to some of the city staff. I said, what would it be like to resurface it and what would the cost be? And I thought they've mentioned something like about $5,000, $6,000, which the city did do two years ago at multiple parks with the basketball courts. And I can even mention, you know, Frontier Park and then some. However, Sunshine Park Basketball Court was left out. I mean, I can really see why the need would be. So I'm assuming this $7,400 is a figure estimated amount for resurfacing the court, I mean, the basketball court. So therefore, I'd like to have a chance to talk to the city council members and maybe we can meet there and then can see. I personally cannot see any damage made at all. However, the letter stipulates, say, damage created, okay? So now, perhaps, I'm thinking, this is purely my own thinking, nothing. Maybe the Parks and Recreation Department may not get the funding for the basketball court resurfacing, maybe for the next year. How about if I offer for the city of Saritos, I'll provide the fund at no interest cost to the city and once the city approves it, reimburse me. And then this way, we'll get the court resurfaced and definitely would be very beneficial for our city of Saritos. And in so doing, hopefully, there will be pickleball lines, then you can have both sports, basketball and/or pickleball.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Robert, can the staff member get together with Mr. Teddy and discuss this? Or what is this bill for, $7,000?
Yes, thank you. The city did issue a letter, as was stated, for damage to basketball court involving the putting down of permanent adhesive and presumably for pickleball recreational purposes. But city staff has met with Mr. Lloyd and we'd be happy to meet with him again. And if any council member would like also, we can facilitate a meeting as well.
Thank you. Next item I have is Simon.
Good evening. My name is Simon and I'm a Saritos resident. First of all, I'd like to start off by saying that only Saritos residents should be allowed to speak at Saritos city council meetings. We don't need pro-Hamas, anti-Semite bullies who are probably funded by George Soros infiltrating our city council meetings to support Hamas rapists and to bully and intimidate our council members. Hamas and their supporters should be condemned. However, I am here tonight to urge you all to add a resolution to the agenda condemning political violence. On July 13th, while President Trump was holding a rally in Butler, Pennsylvania, a gunman on the roof of a nearby building began shooting at President Trump, attempting to end his life. By the grace of God, President Trump moved his head at the right moment to avoid death. Tragically, one life was lost. Cory Comprtor, a former fire chief, who was fatally shot using himself as a human shield to protect his wife and daughter. A husband, father and veteran was shot and killed on that tragic day. That should have never happened. Two attendees from the rally were critically injured and one is still in critical condition. Political violence is unacceptable in any way, shape or form. Whether you support Donald Trump or not, political violence is wrong and should be condemned. Political violence does not just affect one person, it affects all of us. Political violence and hate endangers every citizen's constitutional right to speak freely. Attempting to assassinate a current candidate for president is deplorable and evil. Everyone deserves to live freely and speak freely without being attacked. Two days ago, we learned that a Democrat committed three crimes in Michigan, targeting Trump supporters. He ran over an 80-year-old man with an ATV who is posting a Trump sign in his front yard. This violent man also vandalized two vehicles that were displaying pro-police stickers and flags. We should be standing for law and order and should proudly support good law enforcement officers who work tirelessly to keep us safe, not recklessness and hate. America does not stand for this kind of hateful and violent behavior. We don't have to agree on everything, but we should agree that political violence is wrong and should be condemned. This is not a political issue, it's an ethical issue. Violence is never the answer and should not be tolerated. If they can do this to a presidential candidate, they very well could do it to any of us. It's time for good people to stand up against this political hate, violence and persecution in America. I once again urge you all to add to the agenda tonight a resolution to condemn any form of political violence. It is time we say enough is enough. Thank you.
Al the Zionist?
Good evening, council members. My name is Al and I'm not just a Zionist, I'm a very proud Zionist because I believe the Jews have a right to live in their homeland freely. And I do have something in common with those racist, pro-Hamas, anti-Semites. I also want a ceasefire. However, the racist, pro-Hamas, anti-Semites, what they want is to murder the Jews, not a ceasefire. A ceasefire is their code name for murder more Jews tomorrow. Because they say immediate ceasefire. I say ceasefire in exchange for Hamas releasing all the hostages and disarming themselves so they don't commit more murders and finish the job that Hitler started to murder all the Jews. Last night, we saw exactly why Israel needs to be inside Gaza. The IDF, the Israeli Defense Forces, recovered five dead hostages. How do they do that? Intelligence. How do they get the intelligence? Well, sometimes they run into Hamas people who don't want to become martyrs and get their 72 virgins up in heaven and prefer to surrender and then spill the beans. And that's how Israel got the, got the five, recovered the five bodies that were murdered on October 7th. Yeah, it'd be nice if we can get more of those hostages, both dead and alive. But we do what we can and it's really all up to Hamas. If those racist, pro-Hamas, anti-Semites really wanted a ceasefire, they'd go to Hamas. They wouldn't come here. And they keep coming here and they keep spreading lies. Let me tell you the lies that they're going to spread because they've been spreading them since the beginning of the year. They keep saying genocide. And they said that Israel's been committing genocide since 1948. The Palestinian population in 1948 was 1 million, today it's 5 million. How in the world is this a genocide when the population has more than, increased by a factor of more than five? Beyond me. Next lie they're going to say, Israel has murdered 186,000 people. Lie. The casualty count right now is 39,000 and that includes 40% are Hamas operatives and 500 were Palestinians killing themselves when Islamic Jihad fired a rocket that hit a hospital parking lot and killed 500 people. Of course, they're going to try to blame the Jews. One problem, there's video and intercepted recording that they admitted that it's their rocket. So, I say, send them a clear message and pass a resolution saying the Jews have the right to defend themselves because what it's about, it's not about any ceasefire, any innocent people who are dying. It's about the racist, pro-Hamas, anti-Semites thinking the Jews don't have the right to defend themselves. That's what it's really about. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Gail Grossman.
Good evening. As you can see, I'm using a walking vice to come up to this podium, never expecting that after attending council meetings for over 50 years would I be in need of an assistance from the city. Where is the assistance to meet with the American Disability Act? This building was built in 1978, per Google. This council chamber and city hall are not accessible. We have brought this up before and they tell us the slope is okay for walkers and wheelchairs. Please, it is even difficult without devices. Consider this your complaint and concern that you don't get people to meetings. Look who used to come and because of the hardship of greeting, getting into city hall, they can't. Example, Councilman Barrows. If you didn't have preferred parking and have to walk up the ramp or steps, would have been a challenge. Or Mayor Protem, when you had your walker brace. Maybe you should consider more meetings at the library that have elevator access or CCPA or the senior center. No stairs, easy access, instead of thinking of what is best for you and not the residents. How do you take a walker or wheelchair up the steps? At least a walker, there's rails. And if you can go with the walker folded and hold on to the handrails, which we did tonight, with ample time, than having to get there early enough to park and wait for chambers to open. Please, let this city be on needs of society and help those that need. I have no problems in calling the ADA or their lawyers and asking them to come out here. Our architectural plans are from when city hall was built, not for what the standards are today.
Thank you, Gail. Colleen Aldrich?
Good evening, council as well as city staff. My name is Colleen Aldrich and I've spoken here, I've, in the past and I'm going to try to do it in three minutes. I am agreeing with Gail in that in December of 1999, I had bilateral knee replacements. They were guaranteed for 10 to 15 years. Do the math, people, we're coming up on 25 years that my knees are not working really well and need to be done again. So walking up those stairs, I have a herniated disc in my neck and, which is creating a lot of pain for me, which has made it difficult for me to walk. And when you're 411 and you don't walk and you don't exercise and you don't drink and you don't smoke and you don't use drugs, I eat. So it's created for me a problem with gaining weight. But I'm thinking about all the people that should be here that are not here. So please reconsider making it easier for people to come to these meetings and to be able to speak because those stairs, folks are not doing it, they're just not. Another thing, real quick, and this started in April of 2019, our Coyote Wildlife Watch. It seems that we've run into a stop once again. On 3/13, I talked to a city staff person who told me, yep, we've got the signups, we're ready to go. There was a bit of rudeness with the city staff and I really wanted to speak with our new, our new city manager. And so I wasn't able to speak with him. And so I wasn't able to speak with him because he was busy, which I totally understood. And he did call me, this started on 3/13. I finally got a call back on 3/29, and I listened, I spoke with him, and he said, I will call you personally, or you will hear from city staff. Well, that was 3/29. When I didn't hear by 4:15, which do the math, that's two weeks and three days, I thought it was fair to call. So I did, left another message, and he left me a message saying, well, it'd only been a couple days. Robert, I don't know how you do your math, but 15 days is more than a couple days to me. But that it was still going on, and there was a hiccup, and you didn't know, and someone would get back to me. That was on 4/16. Again, do the math, we're now in July of 2024, and animals are still being killed. I'm deplore, and I beg you, please, let's get Wildlife Watch going. I've offered my assistance, believe it or not, in my business with working in healthcare, I dealt with the state many times. The state told me I had the longest staff retention of any facilities in the state of California, because I know how to deal with people, and I love people, and I care about people. I also care about animals, and they are for family members. So could we please move forward? I realize I've gone a few seconds over, but I implore you to please, I've begged you, please. Animals are dying every day, and our seniors, we need your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Crisha Wayegos.
Hello, City Council. I'm sure as council members, you care very much for the safety of your own citizens. I come again to emphasize that us coming here, calling for peace, is actually a public safety issue. As a reminder of what I said at last council meeting, I mentioned that I've seen dozens of cases of Zionist violence against Palestinian Americans and peaceful protesters. And I asked you all to imagine if one day we don't come to these city council meetings anymore because we were attacked or killed by Zionists. And I don't know if you remember how I paused in shock after I said that, but guess what? It was because someone behind me had said that, yeah, they hoped that would happen to us. I hope you're as shocked and disgusted as I am that somebody in this room wished violence or death upon others here, your own citizens. It made me feel unsafe, frankly, and as I said last time, so many Zionists incite violence and wish death upon us simply because we are begging for peace and for innocent people to stop being killed, and begging for our local government to stand in solidarity with both the safety of Palestinians and your very own residents. We beg you to actually, genuinely, consider a ceasefire resolution and seriously deliberate on it, not just brush it off as if it were an annoying little bug that keeps bothering you. Please take us seriously, please take our safety seriously. And again, we are not alone. The International Court of Justice officially ruled this to be a genocide. So many senators have protested against the Israeli president Netanyahu's speech at Congress. It's time to mirror that behavior here. It's time to be brave and show up for us. It's been six months. It's time to face the reality that the world stands with peace and stands with Palestine, and so should you. Ceasefire resolution on the agenda, please. Thank you.
Next speaker, I have is Maha Afra.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for what you do. Honestly, I did not prepare anything for tonight. Plus, you have the best representation of what Zionism looks, sounds, and lies like. Yesterday's parade of Congress welcoming Ben Zion Melakowski, also known as Setan Yahu, was shameful and disgusting. He is literally just a Polish-American war criminal, worse than Hitler, wanted in so many countries, and they gave him standing ovations, about 50. My friend, who's a Jewish Voice for Peace activist, calculated that it was about $180 per standing ovation, because AIPAC paid $4 million for congressional elections in November 2024. I hope you feel compelled to do the right thing, erase some of the shame that stains this country, supporting genocide, and call for a permanent ceasefire resolution. We will not stop showing up. The whole world stands with Palestine. Go on the street, you will see it. It was, will, and forever will be Palestine, free Palestine. Thank you.
Next speaker, I have is Mel Cortez.
Good evening, everyone. I agree with Ms. Grossman, I want to do better in giving accessibility to council chambers. I know that we had a ramp. Let's not do the minimum. We're Saritos, we do better than the neighboring cities and everybody else, so please, let's try to make this place more accessible to our residents. Saritos median age is 47, California is 37, so eventually I will be needed too. So please. Neighbor who watch, I want to thank Mark Smith. He's doing a great job helping us this summer to do a lot more Neighbor Who Watch meetings, a lot more than last year. And also, I want to remind everyone, especially all five council members, that Neighbor Who Watch captains are also volunteers. Sometimes we forget they're volunteers. They volunteer countless hours to help their neighbors. They work 24/7 to keep our city safe, and sometimes they're forgotten by the city. So please remember that next year, when you talk about volunteers for the city, because I know many of them wake up at 3:00 in the morning when something's going on, at 4:00 in the morning, they drive around, 24/7, not just a forgotten group that keeps the city safe. Also, I want to make sure that, leave this for the record here, that the last time we met as a group, we're Neighbor Who Watch captains, we met here in 2018, but it was just about, yeah, it was to help about safety. And in 2017, we met as Neighbor Who Watch captains also, just to know who they are, who we are. And maybe, I asked this before, honestly, the city could help us organize a Neighbor Who Watch captains meeting for training. There's a lot of new captains, meeting for training, and also to share best practices. I could do it myself, but it'll be better and better attended if it comes from the city. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Margaret Villa.
Tonight, I want to offer my deepest condolences to the Inomoto family with the passing of their sweet daughter Maya. Most people in Saritos, La Habra, La Marada, Whittier, Fullerton, know Jason and his family. The Inomotos are a generational basketball family. Jason played in the Japanese Basketball League. The Inomotos own and operate the Kari sushi in Whittier. It has always been our go-to restaurant. But since had to close naturally to be with their daughter. She passed with her mom and dad cradling her two days ago. She was 10 or 11. The two-fold to this story is, like many Americans, that Inomotos had to do a GoFundMe to pay for medical bills, now for a funeral. With that said, I'll move on to the dystopia we are seeing in this country is not fiction, it's an ugly, hard reality. The recent Sonia Massing killing, the war criminal with an arrest warrant over his fucking head addressing Congress is disgusting, pathetic, and pitiful. But we know now that over 150 reps were a no-show and were forced to pay their staffers to fill seats in Congress. What a shame. At Downey City Council, the mayor expressed how military veterans across America fight for our rights. This articulate young lady said, "We have those rights because we trample and we suffocate the rights of others internationally." I'm not asking for a ceasefire any longer from you. Dismissive, all of you, especially you two at the end, disgust the hell out of me. I know now that passion or moral empathy will not come for a resolution from this council. It may be past time, but we should be addressing higher office lawmakers, without a doubt. It's time to move on. No one is free until we are all free. And to the gentleman with the flag upright, you're right, everybody should live in peace. I agree. Unfortunately, that's not happening. Viva, viva Palestine.
Next speaker, I have is Penny.
Hello. First, I want to ask a question. Why isn't there a ceasefire resolution yet? The ICJ already ruled Israel as an apartheid state, which means America right now is funding, aiding, and abetting an apartheid state that is thriving on the murder and slaughter of kids. So it would make sense for this state, for this city, to pass a ceasefire resolution. We should not be helping an apartheid state. It has been official. We knew for months that it's been an apartheid state, but now officially, the International Criminal Court, or International, sorry, Criminal Court for Justice, they have already ruled Israel as an apartheid state. So you should pass, it is your duty, it is your job, you are required to pass a ceasefire resolution. But I'm going to pass. I think some people in this room do not know the definition of genocide, so I'm going to elaborate. Genocide doesn't mean just killing. It means the ethnic cleansing of a group of people. It means wiping their culture, wiping their peace, wiping their future, their kids. There's no schools in Gaza. There are no more schools. The first few months this genocide started, there were no longer schools. Genocide means killing and wiping a whole ethnic group, a whole culture, a whole people, a whole race, that's what it means, okay? And since this genocide started, we didn't just see people dying from missiles, we saw people dying from starvation. We've seen people dying from diseases that this genocide caused. We've seen kids come out, stillbirth, dead. They didn't even, they were born in war and they died in war. Innocent kids that have nothing to do with political war or whatever, political violence. You can only call that when it's about Trump, right? Not when it's for a kid in Gaza, just because they don't look like you? Just because they don't look like you? No, that's not political violence. But, oh, Trump got shot. That's political violence to you. For months, we saw a genocide over our phones, and now is when we say political violence? No. I'm going to tell you about Hind. Does anyone know about Hind? No, I'm sure you don't know. Hind is a six-year-old girl that died in a car, but before she died, before she was shot over 300 times by Israel, she was in a car full of dead relatives that were shot. And when people were sent to rescue her, she was also shot. Another kid with Down Syndrome, dogs were unleashed on him to kill him.
Thank you.
There are so many stories like this.
Thank you.
It's a genocide.
Thank you.
Ceasefire now.
Next speaker is Sheila Gibbons.
Sorry to have taken your time, I needed a little clarification because I had two issues. So hello, I am Sheila Gibbons, a resident here in Saritos, and I thank you very much, council, for hearing me, and also to the audience here tonight. The item that I want to talk on right now is the fact that there seems to be a need to keep cleaning up the trash that is on the grass area behind the Target store that's on Bloomfield. There seems to be a lot of confusion about who is supposed to take care of that particular spot of area. And so what I'm noticing for all of us neighbors in this one tract of homes near this grass field is that we get more coyotes and skunks and all kinds of animals, cute little creatures, but they're probably coming because of the trash that is left there behind the Target. The store says it's not their responsibility because it's behind the wall that encases their store. And if you call the city council office, they'll usually say that it is the responsibility of Target. So I've had a lot of fun being bounced back and forth in all the years that I've been here. Recently, when I called to the Public Works, I was told that the Metro Office is supposed to take care of cleaning up this area, and at one point, I did see some people come out and cleaned everything all up. It was fantastic, they cut the grass back there, they cleaned up the trash that's been left by a lot of homeless, and they must have had about 15 to 20 large, black trash bags. They left all those in a nice pile, and they've been there now for about three or more weeks. So the homeless that come over by the reservoir in that little train track area, living up under there, they've gone into those bags and opened them up. I'm sure the animals, the coyotes and stuff are there too, and tearing all those bags open. So I thought, that's really a shame, all that hard work that was done to clean up that area, and now the bags are being opened and things strewn. So I guess my wish, my hope that you can do is to clear up whose responsibility it is to keep that area clean, and maybe to let those of us know who live near the area, who do we call when we're noticing that it really does need to be picked up again? I'd really appreciate that. And just one quickie comment to, kind of a sidebar to it, since we are having so many more influx of homeless in our city. I did want to do a shout-out thank you to our law enforcement, because I know that this has added responsibility to them, and I think they're doing a good job, being very polite about dealing with that. So thank you to them too. So thank you again too for your time and attention.
Thank you. Robert, who's this one? Do we can...
Yes, I'll ask our Code Enforcement Division to follow up on the issue of the trash. It sounds like it is metro property, and we'll make sure that they understand the responsibilities. It's either that or the private property owner, but we'll sort that out.
Thank you.
Can I also add to that, please? Regardless of whose responsibility it is, it seems like it needs attention. Is that something that we can go ahead and take care of and bill whoever's responsible for the service?
We do have that ability as a last resort. We do try to work with the entity responsible first. We do... We do have direct contacts with the various agencies, so we can help expedite that.
Thank you. Next, I have is the Ahmad.
Hello, City Council. I've never talked at a Cerrito City Council meeting, but I have talked to other city council meetings before, so this is interesting. I am a lifelong resident in Cerritos, and I went through all Cerrito schools, and I was in the high school class of 2021. And I currently go to UC Berkeley, where I'm a graduate, gonna be a senior next year. So I wanted to speak on a topic that is close to a lot of people's hearts here, which is passing a ceasefire resolution in Gaza and because of the horrible genocide that's being inflicted upon the people of Gaza and the people of Palestine as a whole since 1948, no matter what anybody can say, by the Israeli state. So I think it's important that cities like Cerritos pass resolutions like this because it affirms solidarity from the American public, who you are a representative of us, that we are not in favor of what our federal government and what Israel is doing, so that it can show that we're not a united front and that Israel isn't like America's best friend to all of us. So I wanted to urge a ceasefire resolution, and I think it's important that a ceasefire resolution is passed here because in Cerritos, I grew up with a lot of friends who are mostly Asian-American and whose families fled war based on American imperialism. I have friends who escaped the fall of Saigon and the Khmer Rouge. And personally myself, I'm Indian-American, and I know that India was tormented and punished by the British for many, for like 200 years, just because they wanted to extract resources from India. And that's exactly what Israel's doing in Palestine. So I think as a city, showing that we support anti-colonial movements, like the ones that succeeded in the past, that helped most of us be here where we are today, that would be very affirming to most of our citizens. And I think a lot of young people who grew up in Cerritos aren't here, but if I'm somebody who can speak on behalf of all of them, I think most of us would say that a ceasefire resolution would be something that we would be in favor of for the city doing. So ceasefire now. Thank you, everybody. Have a good day.
Next speaker I have is the Kirti Chohan.
Good evening to Mayor Solanki, Council. I'm here to talk about public comments as a whole. I know it's required under the Brown Act, but then there is a question of debate. What is free speech? How long can it be tolerated? What is the intent? And how do we really meet the needs of the diverse community that we see? I am for free speech. What I have a little confusion is about how you apply those rules within this council. Is it five minutes? Is it three minutes? Is it going to be on video? Is it not gonna be in video? Just be explicit in your intent. I am also, on the other side, disturbed when, whether it's this council meeting or the school board meeting, when speakers who are not members of our community and do not have agendas that relate to the actual body and its intent and the scope of work that it does have in comments. So I am one of those people. I've been on this planet long enough to understand the conflict that's going on and many more. I would urge the council not to entertain any resolution for the intent that you remain neutral out of the things that you have absolutely no scope, no control, nothing. You know, sometimes this platform is used for self-grandizing purposes. Not really. I really care about people who are passionate about the cause. Too often, I see this platform being used for other reasons that really do not, is not about the cause. You know, so please be explicit in your rules. To me, and this is one statement I will make about the situation in Palestine, the leaders of both countries have let their people down. They have taken their own agenda at the sacrifice of their own people. Thank you.
Jay Gray.
Good afternoon, Council. Jay Gray, Cerrito's resident. First thing I want to mention is, how would I turn this? Safety, burglaries, crime in general in the city of Cerritos. It seems our council has a lot of other priorities, rewriting the charter multiple times, extending your terms, giving yourself raises, you know, that kind of fun stuff. But when it comes to looking after the city, which is really what you were elected to do, right? You guys kind of gloss it over. We have two officers standing here that probably should be on the street, but for some reason you feel your safety's in jeopardy, I guess. I've been in many school board meetings with much heated discussion than this, and you don't see officers over there. They do have security, usually school personnel, but you know, they're not paying, you know, deputies to stand guard. With that said as well, with the difficulty in California and across the nation, hiring officers just because of the climate, the political climate, people wanting to be officers, staying on, and so on. You know, we're seeing other cities look at alternatives to supplement what they have. Lakewood next door is one, where they've hired private security to patrol the streets, kind of the extra eyes and ears. They see something, they turn it in to the sheriffs. I'm curious if this is something that this, it's nothing that I've heard that this council is interested in. Maybe you are, maybe you can elaborate on that. And if you're not curious, why not? You know, later you'll be discussing putting a charter amendment to rewrite the charter after two years once again. You know, maybe instead of taking that time and that money to do that, maybe take that time and that money of staff to look into providing more security for our residents, both for themselves and for their homes. And with that said as well, you know, you guys have taken down the Constitution that was sitting up here. You were called out on it, and I called you out on it, so you guys finally hung it back up there. You cut public comments down from five minutes, you cut it down to 40% to three minutes. You won't allow the public to post on the comment on the city's social media, Facebook page. You know, you've, I think it was mentioned before, you've at some point wouldn't allow the video to be shown because it was something you didn't want to hear. You know, you have three individuals that have an R after their name, basically for their party affiliation, and yet you're going along with this. I mean, I'm embarrassed and disgusted for you guys. I mean, that's just ridiculous. You would expect it from those with the D, but not with the R. I mean, you know, come on. I mean, what's wrong with free speech? What's wrong with allowing your residents to speak? What's wrong with allowing your residents to comment?
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you. I appreciate the extra couple of seconds from my three minutes.
Okay. That's all the cards I have. Is anyone else like to speak on public comments? If not, we'll close the public comments and bring it back for council for the concerned calendar. Motion to approve.
Move approved. Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you put a roll call?
Yes, thank you. And I'm sorry, I did not catch the second. Was that Mayor Protem? Thank you. And we conduct a roll call vote. Council Agency Member Barrows.
Aye.
Council Agency Member Johnson.
Aye.
Council Agency Member Yokuyama.
Yes.
Mayor Protem and Vice Chair Vo.
Aye.
Mayor and Chair Solanki.
Aye.
The motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item is the public hearing. There is no public hearing item tonight. We'll go back to item under nine, new and old business. Nine A, Mr. City Manager, do have report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Item 9A this evening is here as the culmination of a longstanding public engagement process as required under state law related to the names of certain places throughout the state. The presentation this evening will be given by Advanced Planning Manager Sabrina Chan. And following that, she and Ms. Agula, Mr. Urquhart, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you this evening relates to Assembly Bill 2022 and the requirement for the city to rename Squaw Valley Way, a residential street located in the southeast portion of the city. At this time, I would like to turn your attention to the screen for a presentation. Assembly Bill 2022 was enacted in September 2022, declaring the term "squaw" as racist and derogatory, historically used as an offensive ethnic slur, particularly for indigenous women. AB 2022 requires the term "squaw" to be removed from all geographic features and places, including public streets, places, and buildings. As such, in the city of Cerritos, one existing public street, Squaw Valley Way, is required to be renamed before January 1st, 2025. Squaw Valley Way is located in a neighborhood tract generally east of Bloomfield Avenue and north of Delamo Boulevard, directly east of Don Kenaby Regional Park and the Coyote Creek Channel. A total of 62 residential properties are located within the neighborhood tract, including 27 properties on Squaw Valley Way. The residential neighborhood tract consists of six residential streets, all named after luxury ski resorts. So in compliance with Assembly Bill 2022, over the last several months, staff has facilitated efforts towards the renaming of Squaw Valley Way in coordination with the State of California Natural Resources Agency and with Cerritos property owners directly impacted by the required renaming of Squaw Valley Way. These efforts have been in pursuit of preserving the original geographic and historical context of the area, specifically related to selecting a replacement name after a luxury ski resort like the other streets within the neighborhood. The city is also required to consult with California Native American tribes to solicit proposals for replacement street names. And while not required, staff works diligently to solicit input and engage residents residing on Squaw Valley Way, as well as residents within the surrounding neighborhood tract, in an effort to ensure that input from those directly impacted by the name change are appropriately considered when selecting a replacement street name. Tribal consultation began in February and continued for a three-month period with the hopes of receiving input or suggested replacement street names from California Native American tribes. Three substantive responses were received, two expressing general support for any proposed renaming of Squaw Valley Way, and one comment suggesting Jaiso Bitway as a potential replacement street name. Jaiso Bit represents a historical tribal village in close proximity to the subject location. As a result of the comments received, Jaiso Bitway was included in a list of potential replacement street names provided as part of the city's community engagement efforts. To engage impacted residents, a community meeting was held at the Cerrito Senior Center on June 10th, 2024, for residents of all 62 properties within the neighborhood tract containing Squaw Valley Way to solicit public input on potential replacement street names. Approximately 15 residents were in attendance at the meeting. In advance of the meeting, the city prepared a list of potential replacement street names for feedback during the meeting. Included on this list was Jaiso Bitway, recommended by the Gabri Leno Tongva Indians of California Tribal Council. During the meeting, several residents provided comments on potential replacement street names, and the comments were incorporated accordingly into the renaming process. Following the meeting, the 27 property owners residing on Squaw Valley Way were given the opportunity to participate in a mail-in ballot voting process to select a potential replacement street name for Squaw Valley Way. Based on the comments received at the community meeting, a mail-in ballot comprised of 23 options for replacement street names, with a write-in option as well, were mailed to all 27 properties on June 12th. Included in the package was a return envelope with prepaid postage. Residents were asked to rank their top five choices for a replacement street name in order of priority, and were given approximately three weeks to vote. After mailing the ballots, staff was notified of a clarification to one of the 23 names included on the original ballot. In light of this, a correction notice was hand-delivered to all 27 residents on July 17. On several occasions throughout the voting process, staff canvassed the neighborhood and knocked on the doors of the 27 Squaw Valley Way homes to make sure that these residents were informed of the required renaming and to encourage them to select a replacement name. As a result of these efforts, a total of 24 ballots were received by the city. Courtesy phone calls and in-person canvassing efforts were conducted to contact the three property owners who did not respond. However, these three ballots were not received by the city. Thus, upon review of the received ballots, the highest ranking and resident-preferred replacement street name is Sun Valley Way. Sun Valley is also the name of a luxury ski resort in Idaho, thus preserving the original historical intent of the geographic area in compliance with Assembly Bill 2022. Thus, it is recommended that Sun Valley Way be approved and selected as the official replacement street name with submittal to the state for final approval. In addition, it is recommended that the city also submit two alternates in the case that the original name is not approved by the state. Based on the votes, the alternates would be Deer Valley Way and Sky Valley Way. If the city council approves the resident-selected replacement street name this evening, the names will be submitted to the state in advance of the August 6th deadline. Following submittal, the state will review the selected name. Once the state approves the replacement name, anticipated in January 2025, the city will commence implementation of the street name change. This will include continued communication with impacted property owners and the changing of street signs and maps. In the meantime, while waiting for state approval, the city will take every effort to coordinate with other entities to assist impacted residents through this process. These include the County of Los Angeles, County of Orange, United States Postal Service, the Department of Motor Vehicles, Social Security Office, City of La Palma, and all local public utility entities. Staff will also begin preparing a resource guide with designated contacts for these entities and will explore facilitating in-person assistance by these entities for these residents. Lastly, staff will continue to explore opportunities for financial assistance for these residents who need to change their address following the street name change. I did want to note that throughout this process, Squaw Valley Way residents have inquired about compensation for incurred personal costs as a result of the state-mandated street name change. Following these inquiries, staff contacted the state and was informed that no such funding is available to compensate residents for personal costs related to the street name change. The city was notified that under AB 2022, there may be a potential reimbursement specifically for the city, and staff is working with the city attorney's office to determine what city incurred costs, if any, may be eligible for state reimbursement. So at this time, it is recommended that the city council review and discuss the information provided and adopt a resolution formally approving and selecting Sun Valley Way as the replacement street name and Deer Valley Way and Sky Valley Way as alternates. This concludes my presentation. At this time, Director of Community Development, Kristen Agula, and myself are available to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina and Kristina, for the report. The council has a question.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Sabrina, for the report. One question, when we put up the new street signage, are we going to keep the old signage up for a certain period of time as we transition into the new street name?
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson, for that question. As part of the implementation process, staff will be working and consulting with the various other agencies to determine if any of the other agencies have any concerns or issues with the city having both street names, both signs up for a period of time during this transition. And if there are no concerns, and if it is the interest of the city council, staff can work to ensure both street name signs are up for a transition period if, once the street name is approved by the state.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Sinan, I will open it up for the public comments. If anyone like to speak on this item. I do have one card which is Sheila Gibbons.
So hello again, council members. I just want to say, I'm so happy that my neighbors kept up with the historical background of the streets in the area. I personally live on Vale Street, so I'm connected to Squaw Valley. I missed it by two houses. Yay! But I was concerned that as a neighbor in the same area, we were not we were not also approached during the door-to-door walkthrough. I think I was ill during that December, uh, June meeting, so I did not get to give input then. But I am happy to know I like the selection that they've chosen, so I hope that you can go forth with that and maybe find a couple pennies' change to help my neighbors with any costs that they incur in terms of changing over personal letterheads, things they may have really invested a lot of money into. I think that that's fair. And I also want to thank you for considering keeping up both the old and the new street signs so that people trying to locate their friends won't get lost. Because I know I did a lot when I was coming out here into Cerritos in that tract of homes. So thank you again for letting me speak, and I'm very happy to know that we're moving forward, hopefully with the Sun Valley Way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for the council for any questions or discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the name, you know, change, but also add that we pursue all legal avenues to get reimbursement from the state. It is part of the state law, and the fact that they have historically, for a good number of years, not abided by, you know, the laws that are passed. You know, it does cost money. You know, I know our city has put a significant amount of time and effort into it, and we should be reimbursed also. Does that be my motion to accept the name change and to pursue recovery of the expenses?
Second.
Okay. Just real quick, some discussion in regards to what Councilmember Barrows was saying. In regards to state mandates that are being enforced down to the local levels, I know that there's a law of the states that the state has to provide funding for it, unless, the exception, I know that the city attorney sent this to us a while back, the exception is if the city can incur those costs onto the residents. In this case, we're not doing that, so does that law applies to the state to mandate them to pay for this?
Yes, thank you for the question, council members and mayor, members of the council. As referenced in the staff report and as Ms. Chan referenced, we've been discussing with staff possibilities on reimbursements at the city level as well as any avenues that might be available to residents to individually possibly get reimbursements. The state mandate question is in part answered by the California Constitution in that there is a general prohibition against the legislature mandating local programs without paying for them. But as Mayor Protam referenced, one of the exceptions to requiring the state to actually reimburse out of the state's general fund is when there is the ability for a local agency to impose fees or charges to get reimbursed for whatever the mandate may be. Interestingly, the bill does provide, and as Ms. Chan referenced, there was reference to the ability of possibly seeking reimbursement for city costs through the Commission on State Mandates that has exclusive jurisdiction in the state to decide if there have been costs incurred by the city that are only because of the law, and there is not an ability for the city to pass that cost on. So it's a long way of answering the question, that is, to the extent there may be city costs incurred, again, unknown how much that may be for the city, there may be a mechanism by going to the Commission on State Mandates for the city as a public agency to get those reimbursed.
Thank you, and Councilmember Barrows, I'd like to actually take it a step further and not just pursue all legal aspects, but also to find out which other cities have been affected with this and to get together with all of them and form a, I guess, a coalition of cities to go after the state for the costs for the cities. And in turn, if we can get that back, then maybe we can look at helping out our residents here with their costs.
I'll accept that. Answered amendment.
Thank you.
You gonna accept that, Frank?
Yes, I will accept that for my second.
So we have a motion and a second. Madam Clark, would you please call the roll call?
Thank you. At this time, a roll call vote will be conducted. Council Agency Member Barrows.
Aye.
Council Agency Member Johnson.
Aye.
Council and Agency Member Yokoyama. Mayor Protam and Vice Chair Vo.
Aye.
Mayor and Chair Solanke.
Aye.
The motion passes by a vote of five-zero.
Thank you. Next item we have is the Item 9B. Mr. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Item 9B is a preliminary discussion regarding potential amendments to the city charter. The presentation this evening will begin with Ms. Barone providing an overview. Also, Mr. Urki will provide some additional background. And following the presentation and discussion, they and I would be happy to answer any questions. Ms. Barone?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before the City Council this evening is review and consideration of a report from the City Council-appointed City Charter Review Ad-hoc Working Group concerning the results of their preliminary review of certain charter-related items as requested by City Council consensus direction in March of this year. We wanted to start this presentation with the foundation of charter reviews in general and actions the City Council can and cannot take tonight. First, review of the city charter on a regular basis is a good governance best practice. Charter reviews ensure that the language of the charter document remains in compliance with community desires, any superseding state laws, and modern business practices and terminology. We also wanted to provide clarification that this item is before the City Council tonight for the purpose of review, discussion, public input, and further direction only. The City Council cannot take action tonight to place any charter amendment measures on a future election ballot. This is a similar charter review process as was conducted in 2021. Nine separate public meetings were held prior to City Council action to adopt resolutions placing proposed measures on an election ballot. The goal of tonight's report is to provide a starting point for community input and City Council discussion on various elements of the charter, well in advance of the deadline, to place measures on the March 4th, 2025 ballot for voter consideration. And those deadlines will be presented a little later in this report. By way of background, the City Council annually appoints an ad hoc working groups comprised of less than the quorum of its members to conduct comprehensive preliminary review of various matters of interest to the city. Upon completion, each ad hoc working group presents their findings for review and consideration by the full complement of the City Council at noticed public meetings. Any final decision-making on proposed recommendations from ad hoc working groups is subject to a vote of the full City Council. As authorized by City Council Majority Action, the Assigned City Charter Review Ad-hoc Working Group conducted a preliminary review of the current charter document. The purpose of the review was to determine whether general cleanup amendments to the charter are necessary to comply with superseding laws and regulations, identifying language or sections within the document which may require clarification or modernization to align with modern municipal governance practices. Additionally, the working group's review included preliminary assessment of two potential charter amendment items requested by the City Council pursuant to consensus direction. On March 14th, 2024, the City Council provided consensus direction to review and consider a proposed charter amendment to require voter approval for any future change to the city's general municipal election date. On March 28th, 2024, the City Council also provided consensus direction to review and consider a proposed charter amendment to include a directly-elected mayor as a city elective office. It is important to note that the preliminary assessment work conducted was to determine at a very high level whether the proposed charter amendments were legally allowed by our charter and any superseding California laws, and to review other facts as related to each matter that should be confirmed prior to City Council and community review to facilitate the discussion and development of any future ballot measures. The goal was to confirm and establish facts related to each item to start the discussion. And with that, we're ready to go into each of the proposed items. And I can take a quick pause and see if there's any questions at this juncture before we move on. Okay. With that, we're ready to go into the first of the three items reviewed by the working group. After the staff presentation is completed for each item, we will turn it over to the members of the working group to facilitate further discussion and public input. So item number one, we'll start with a directly-elected mayor. On March 28th, the City Council provided consensus direction to review and consider various factors related to establishing a directly-elected mayor as a city elective office in the charter. The review confirmed a few legal items. The first item is that state law prohibits candidates from running for the mayor seat and a council seat during the same election. The second legal fact is that our current charter language prohibits a directly-elected mayor seat to be included on the March 4th, 2025 ballot. So to clarify, on March 4th, 2025, voters can approve an amendment, if placed, to the city charter to include a directly-elected mayor position, but candidates for a directly-elected mayor cannot be included on the March 4th, 2025 ballot. Given those facts, the working group also looked at other high-level factors that have to be considered in developing a proposed ballot measure for a directly-elected mayor, including total length of the mayoral term of office, the current term limits in effect in Cerritos, and the potential future election date at which candidates could run for the mayoral seat. After conducting general review of other cities with directly-elected mayors and taking a look at our current term limits, we landed on the following items as starting points for City Council discussion. And here, we have a graphic that would show what the proposed starting date, which we suggest to start in 2029, when there are three council seats open. As we mentioned earlier, a mayor seat cannot be elected in 2025. We can place the matter on the ballot for consideration, but the start date we are recommending or the ad hoc working group suggested starting in 2029, as in 2027, there are only two city council seats open. So if we could go back to the previous slide. The other characteristics of the directly-elected mayor position would include no change in the current powers and duties of the mayor. The mayor position would still be a council member for purposes of voting, and the council manager form of government would remain in place. As a starting point for discussion, the current term limits which apply to a council member seat would apply to the separately-directly-elected mayor seat. After the commencement date, once it is decided, an eligible individual could serve two complete lifetime terms as a directly-elected mayor. It should be noted that currently, commencing with the April 12th, 2022 election, an eligible individual can serve two complete lifetime term limits as a directly-elected council member. Additionally, in compliance with our current charter, an appointment or election to fill any portion of an unexpired term for mayor or council member seat do not count towards a lifetime term limits. And at this time, I will turn the presentation over to Councilmember Barrows, the chair of the working group, to facilitate future further discussion on this item and to open public comment.
Thank you, Vida. And with the mayor's permission, are there any questions for Vida and what she shared so far?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
What cities did you look at? You mentioned that you reviewed cities that have a directly-elected mayor. I don't, I didn't see it, a list in the agenda report. Did I overlook it?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Thank you, Councilmember Yokoyama, for that question. I actually sent out a very quick, kind of down-and-dirty survey to the listserv, the League of California Cities City Clerk listserv, just to see, you know, which cities, or just generally speaking, if cities had directly-elected mayors, whether they were two years or four years. And it was just a general, kind of quick, look to see what cities had those. We did not do like a full survey. It was just kind of quick to see kind of what were the elements, whether they had districts, whether they didn't have districts, whether it was two years, whether it was four years. And just brought that general information, that it's either two or four years, back to the group just for general discussion. But we did not do a full survey. We just did kind of a high-level, quick survey. Or I did.
So that information was not provided to the City Council?
That is correct. We, the ad, it was discussed briefly at the ad hoc working group level that I did just a quick survey to see, you know, are cities doing some other variation? Are they doing two? Are they four? What did it come back as? And just brought that general information at a very high level.
So you characterize it as a quick survey. Why didn't we do a thorough survey? Why didn't we do a complete survey? Why didn't we do a full survey?
Thank you, Councilmember Yokoyama, for the question. That's certainly the prerogative of the City Council. The goal of the ad hoc working group is to collect preliminary information and not direct an abundance of staff work on these items. That's really the prerogative of the full complement of the City Council.
How was the information of this quick survey provided to the ad hoc working group?
I provided it verbally.
Was provided verbally. Are there minutes of that meeting?
No, there's not. It is not a Brown Act meeting. It is not a Brown Act group.
I didn't ask if it was a Brown Act meeting. I'm just asking if there were minutes.
No, there was no minutes taken.
So how can the City Council find out what the information of this quick survey was?
Well, I can certainly put it together at the direction of the majority of the City Council. The City Council, at their prerogative, can direct staff to go out and conduct a more thorough survey with whatever elements that the City Council would like to see.
Shouldn't it have just been provided as part of this agenda report dealing with this issue? I mean, what, why? If there's going to be an agenda item, an agenda report on this issue, why wasn't it just provided? Why do we have to ask if a majority of the City Council wants this information to be provided, which is clearly relevant to this agenda item and this agenda report? Because you mentioned it in your verbal report about this agenda report. Those are, that's my comment. It just seems like there's not full information for the public and the council. There's not full transparency for the public and the council. It's already, I'm already kind of troubled by the fact that I don't have full information available to me as one of the five council members to make a fully-informed, thorough, transparent review of this agenda item. Thank you.
Vida, if I can weigh in on it. We, you know, the task force wasn't really trying to go ahead and have a complete staff report because not knowing whether we're going to go forward or looking at it. The council didn't even get into the pros and cons of whether we should or shouldn't have a position, you know, for the residents in terms of whether we should just look at a mayor, you know, position completely. There's a lot more there. I started, you know, to list a lot of the items, you know, during this week, and I didn't do that. I can make a good case for it. I can make a case against it. We've had those discussions on and off amongst council members, you know, here or there, over, you know, the last twenty, thirty years. The general thought was as long as we don't have term limits is we didn't need to have an elected mayor. This has all changed in terms of our leadership, in terms of, you know, who's going to represent us, you know, either regionally or statewide or on the federal side. But, you know, I agree with Vida said, you know, we can go ahead and have a complete, you know, process. You know, we were, put a lot of time in on the handbook for all the appointees. And that's where I put a lot of my time in for the last few months. We didn't have time to do a real complete thing because, you know, we knew that we were not going to recommend language for, you know, the election, you know, at this point. But if there's no other questions, I'll open to the public. Lynda, go ahead.
Yes, I have, I have like three questions. I'll go over my questions real quick, and then I'll come back and circle back for responses. So my first question is, who sits on the policy committee? What staff members, what council members sit on there? I know the answer. I want the community to know too. My second question is, why is the policy committee proposing a change? What is wrong with our current system of our own mayoral transition? And what was the conversation in the policy committee regarding that? And my third question is, is how will having a directly-elected mayor make life better for our residents? Will it better address getting their trees trimmed, potholes fixed, streets maintained? These are questions I want to ask myself before supporting such a change. So back to my first question, who sits on the committee as far as council and staff members?
I'll go ahead and answer that. The committee is myself and Chung Vo. We had the city manager, the city attorney, the city clerk, and another administrator, which was Drew.
Drew, okay, thank you. True. Okay, thank you. And why is the policy committee proposing a change to go with an elected mayor? And if you can please answer what is wrong with our current system and?
Just, just for clarification, it's not the policy committee. It's the charter committee.
Yes.
So I just wanted to let you know that your question has to refer to charter committee.
Okay.
Okay, and your second question?
Yes, why, why is this being proposed to us, having a directly elected mayor?
As Vida pointed out, council, you know, a member brought it up.
Who did? You did. I didn't bring it up.
I, I didn't say you did.
Oh, you said it was brought up.
It was a consensus item, and it was agreed to on a 5-0 vote.
On a consensus? I don't think there was three, I don't think there were five votes on a consensus. I know I voted on consensus because I knew, I only voted on consensus because on March 28th, you mentioned that you wanted consensus to discuss a directly elected mayor. You mentioned there would be pros and cons, and that staff report would come back with that. There is no staff report with pros and cons, so I too, I'm troubled with the staff report. But beyond that, why are we going with an elected? It was your consensus, so what is your reason for having a directly, a directly elected mayor? I just want to know a reason.
Okay, well, like was brought out, it was done at a high-level look, you know, that proverbial 30,000 to see what we can and can't do in terms of if there's, you know, interest to look at it. You know, I, I've had a couple of residents call and talk, you know, to me, they were against it. Once we kind of went through it, they said it was worth looking at. They didn't understand that, as I'm pointing out, when we went to term limits, we cannot get to leadership positions. So if we look at SCAG and the $500 million that went to them just recently, we have no voice on the transportation side without getting into the leadership part of it.
Well, how does a directly elected mayor allow us to get on leadership positions?
Well, in terms of what the conference of mayors.
That's just one. There's gag.
No, no, okay. SCAG doesn't have the influence that the conference of mayors does in DC.
You're talking about one organization's conference of mayors compared to all the other organizations that Frank and I actually sit on, which is SCAG, League of Cities, Contract Cities, that we are prevented from leadership positions because of our term limits. So that doesn't, directly elected mayor doesn't affect that or, or help us.
No, it does. I mean, my 21 years experience is that the mayors do have greater access.
No, they don't, because if Frank and I are sitting on SCAG and, and Contract Cities and we're not the mayor, it doesn't matter. We don't need a directly elected mayor.
Yeah, I'll let you go ahead and believe that.
Okay.
Just real quick, can I respond? I appreciate the passionate discussion here. They're all, the whole reason why it's being brought up is because there was consensus of the council to have this discussion. And this is exactly why we're doing it, is so we can have this discussion. This is not something that, at least for me, being on the ad hoc committee, that I'm saying that I support or I'm for it. The direction from the council is to have this ad hoc committee to bring up thoughts and discussion and bring it back to the council as a whole. And so that's what we're doing here, is discuss it, not to automatically say this is what the ad hoc committee wants. So the comments that are being brought forward is valid, and I understand them. But also, one of the other reasons why it was brought forward to have discussion is also, at least for me, you know, every year when we do the mayoral transition, there's always those folks in the community that says, how come the council gets to vote for it and not the people? And in doing this, this puts the power to, in the people's hands so they can do it. But again, it's, these are just thoughts and ideas. We're having discussion. You know, it's always been very stressful for the community during the mayoral transition because it comes down to, before there was a tradition in regards to, there was a rotation and so forth. You know, there's been discussion of politics being involved and so forth. And at least for me, I think that if the folks are given the power to choose their own mayor, they have that right to do so. But then again, this discussion, if the council doesn't find that that is good for the community, that's why we're here discussing it. The other issue that, not issue, but the other thing is that I've always, when I moved here and then I, I didn't know about politics, I didn't know about council, it's always kind of understood that the mayor was elected or they serve a term. And then I learned that local cities, smaller cities rotate. And then I know being a mayor, when we go to other, or we meet folks or we're out there in the city, it's always something we have to explain how we rotate every year and, and give that role to somebody else every single year. And a lot of folks who aren't involved, they, they, they just assume the mayor is one elected, two, that, you know, they're there serving a term of four years or two years, depending on some cities. But again, this is for discussion. And so the questions that are being brought up, that's why we're talking. That's, and we're going to give an opportunity to the community to have this discussion. That's why this ad hoc committee existed, and that's why we bring it forward. It's almost, I feel like there's an assumption that this is going to be approved or because we're bringing it forward or this is something we want to happen. This is a discussion period. This is a way to get feedback from the community as well, and also to the other three council members that are not on the committee. So that way the ad hoc committee knows what direction we need to go. So I just wanted to say that.
Okay, well, I'd like to point out that we are not to discuss it until after we have puppy comments. You can ask questions for clarification, but no.
I'm asking questions.
No discussion.
Okay, so my next question is that how will having a directly elected mayor make life better for our residents? I know Chung mentioned it's so easy to talk to other colleagues saying, oh, we have an elected mayor versus a mayoral transition. That's not a good enough answer for me. I want to know what it does for our residents. All our cities in the area are rotational. All of our cities actually have policy protocol on their mayoral transition. We don't. Maybe that's something we need to address rather than having an elected mayor. But how is this going to help me help my residents? That's my question.
Well, I'll go back to what I, I said earlier. It gives the power to the residents to decide who the mayor is. So in that sense, it's giving the, the choice to the people.
How does it make life better? Everyday issues of trees trimmed, potholes fixed, all of that. How does that make it better to have in a proposed, proposed staff report to have somebody sit there for four years?
Okay, but I'll go back. Your question is asking for a discussion with more research. If you want to get to that answer, we're going to have to have it come back to us.
I mean, I've lived here 50 years. Frank's lived here just as long, Bruce, you too. And it's always been a mayoral transition. I don't think any of us are shocked that we're not having an elected mayor.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Yes, please.
Frank, go ahead.
So, yeah, so looking at this agenda report, exhibit one, the city of Cerritos appointments, under city charter review, mayoral appointments. For these internal ad hoc working groups, these mayoral appointments. By the way, I'll, by the way, I'll point out for the public that my name is not listed to one appointment because the mayor did not appoint me to anything. But looking at these internal ad hoc working groups, it says city charter review, Bruce W. Barrows, one name. So why is there a mistake there? Because I'm being told today that Chung Bo is on this internal ad hoc working group. I didn't know that. And this shows that it was updated as of June 27, 24. There's only one name on here. That's what I saw when I was preparing for this item today. And I thought that you guys were all in a room with Bruce figuring this stuff out. And now I know that Chung's on the internal ad hoc working group according to what I'm hearing at the meeting for the first time. So what's going on? Could somebody explain to me why the, this document that we provide to the residents of Cerritos, available in the city clerk's office to the public, says that Bruce Barrows is the only council member on the city charter review internal ad hoc working group?
Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, thank you, Councilmember Yokiyama for the question. I will have to go back and take a look at our records and take a look at the minutes to make sure that that document is accurate. If it was an error, it's an error on my part. Thank you.
So the correct membership of the internal ad hoc working group is what then? Can I have that clarification?
Thank you. I'm going to go back and, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, I will go back and check the records for the action that the council took. But it's my understanding that the members of that particular group are, it's mayor, or councilmember Barrows as the chair and council, Mayor Protem Chung Bo as the co-chair, vice chair.
How long does that take to look? Because that's actually a very concerning question. Couldn't we take a five-minute break?
And also, who else is on the committee with them? I just want the confirmation one more time because this confused me that it only says Bruce Barrows. So I just want to know, who are we being, who is the public being told right now at this meeting for this agenda item? Who is the public being told is on this? City council-appointed city charter review ad hoc working group?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. The council in general appoints, this is kind of just kind of a high level. The council each year, the mayor makes recommendations or the council itself will request formation of ad hoc working groups. And those consist of less than a quorum of the city council. So there can be flexibility in researching various topics, contemporaneous topics or topics that are of short-term duration, that are of interest to the community and to the city council. And they're made up of less than a quorum of the city council so that they can have the flexibility to go out and do research and they don't have to wait for a council meeting each time to make, to get out, you know, get out, do research. That information is done by the less than a quorum of the city council. This is very common practice in many cities. In fact, the majority of cities, they gather the information at a high level and they bring it back to the full complement of the city council for further decision-making. For example, you can see on that brochure, we have council members assigned to various assignments. It's really at the discretion, and I'll defer to the city attorney as far as legalities, but it's really at the discretion of each of the ad hoc working groups to determine how they want to conduct their work as assigned to the city council. But the most important thing, as we mentioned early in the report, is that nothing can be done in terms of like a lot workload or major surveys, major conduct. This is kind of just preliminary work. Any in-depth work has to be directed by the full complement or a city council majority at a council meeting. It's really just kind of preliminary starting point. And I can defer to the city attorney for any sort of legalities, but it's really at the discretion of the ad hoc working group to determine how they will conduct or who they want to include as long as they don't violate the Brown Act. And I'll defer to the city attorney. Thank you.
So what you've just explained is there are no addition, other than the council members, there are no other members of the ad hoc working group. There are no, none of the charter employees?
That's correct. Actually, Councilmember Yokiyama, I was going to jump.
And none of the city employees.
That's correct. The committees, the subcommittee ad hoc working committees themselves are only one or two council members. And then?
We call it a group.
Yeah, the working group.
But it could be one council member.
That's correct. And then, as may be the case, depending on the subject matter, staff or consultants may be in one of those meetings. But technically, the members of that committee are only one or two council members.
But it was just said that councilmembers Bo and Barrows were in that group. But as Frank pointed out, it's not listed, so like I said, I find that concerning and I kind of would like an answer now. So I don't know if we need a break or something for her to look at the notes?
I'll defer to the discretion of the council on that one. But I can say, as the city clerk pointed out, legally, as long as there's less than a quorum, which means one or two members of the council, there's no concern of any requirements that are normally triggered under an open meeting, under the open meeting law of the Brown Act.
Yes, I know, Bill. I know legally, yes. But, you know, we want to be also transparent. And why is there an extra council member joining in on a meeting that was not offered to other council members?
I, I would like to add, I would also like to clarify as well because I was under the impression I was under this charter committee. I know when the mayor made his appointment, I remember that we were part of that committee, but it's not listed, and that is concerning to me as well. Thank you, Frank, for bringing that up. Because I've been participating, of course, there's no legal issues, but I've been participating as a ad hoc committee member, and I'm not listed. So that's something I would like to, I would like to wonder why too. So I'm good with just clarifying it right now as well, if you want to take a break.
Sure. Actually, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, I, I'm looking at a screenshot of the minutes. I do have from the April 29th meeting for, on that day when they did the original appointments, we do have for city charter review, we do have just councilmember Barrows listed. But subsequent to that, there may have been another action to include another council member. But on that day, on April 29th, it was listed as councilmember Barrows as the, the city, for city charter review. But as I said earlier, you know, it's really at the city council's discretion on how they want, the ad hoc working group on how they want to conduct their work.
And that's based on the minutes, right?
Correct. That is the April 29th minutes. I cannot confirm right now. I'd have to go through every single set of minutes since then to see if at some point there was a decision to be made to add.
But if there was a decision, a decision to be added, we would have voted.
It would have been at a council meeting. And so, but right now I can say that was April 29th. The minutes, the screenshot from the minutes does indicate just councilmember Barrows. Again, I'd have to defer to the city attorney for legality.
So city attorney, the, my question is, the, the deliberations of this ad hoc working group was influenced by a non-member? Is that a?
That's fine.
Is that along the lines of the spirit of what these ad hoc working groups were developed here in our city? What's, what's the purpose of having a mayoral appointment to a working group? If there can just be non-members of the working group influencing and deliberating the results of the working group and presenting those results back to the city council, what's the use of a mayoral appointment? What's the use of calling it a working group? What's the use of having a public document that we provide to the residents where we claim to be transparent about who's working, which city council members were appointed by the mayor to be working on these issues? It just seems like, you know, we're pulling a fast one on the residents.
Well, if I could respond, as far as the legality, it's fine. If less than a quorum, which means if an ad hoc committee only has one member of the council, but another joins in one meeting or a couple.
I don't think, I don't think, the resident, the residents don't want to hear that we're, we're, we're meeting the bare minimums of the law. The residents want to know that we're doing things the right way, the above board, transparent. When they hear that a council member is appointed to a committee, they, they want to take that for face value. They want to know that that's what this, this city council's doing.
And understood.
I just think, it's just a, it's such a big screw-up. Somebody screwed up. It's just a big screw-up.
I, I agree. I agree 1,000%. You know, when I was told to attend meetings because I was part of the working group, I just assumed, because I, I think we were on the charter committee prior to, prior to Mayor Solanke becoming mayor. And maybe the understanding was it just continued on. I don't know if you changed it or not, or maybe this was a clerical error. But the fact that it's listed here now like this, and then the fact that you went back to the minutes, if we're going to ask you to go back to the minutes and confirm, and you did, how can we move forward now based on your confirmation of the minutes? And I agree, that is a, regardless of the legal issue, and I think this has happened once before. I know that I was. and I think this has happened once before. I know that I was, I can't remember, it was a while back, where I was the chairperson of a committee, and somehow, staff changed it to someone else being chairperson, and we, we had to correct that. And we had to look back in the minutes to correct that. In this case, it, it's kind of happening again. And I want to be very clear, that prior to Neurash's term, I was on the charter review committee, because we, we looked at other issues. And maybe the assumption, or maybe not, we shouldn't be assuming. And I don't know if the mayor made any changes. I don't know if he did or he didn't. But if you didn't, and then this is a clerical error, then, or just the assumption that he did make a change, and staff changed just Bruce, that's, that's something we need to correct. But I will be willing, because of the fact that you've already confirmed that I'm not supposed to be on this committee, and the fact that we're bringing it here to have discussion, a couple options. One, we can bring this all back to the ad hoc committee where I'm not going to participate, and have Bruce Barrows be that only member, because that's what's being reflected, that's the way it should be done. Or moving forward, any, any discussion from this council to bring back to ad hoc committee, I would, I will gladly not participate, if that's what the council so wishes. This is not something that I was, you know, wanted to do. This is an obligation as a council member, to work on a committee, to bring back to the people, to so they can see what's being proposed, and have discussion. But if the concern is that there's some influence, or there's some bias, then, you know, I'll be more than happy to not participate anymore. That isn't an issue for me at all. I do agree that there's a concern that Bruce is being listed here, and I'm not. So, I would, I would hope that staff thoroughly look at this, and maybe go back to the actual video of that meeting, when the mayor made his appointments, and the council voted. And also look at that, not just the minutes, but based on your research right here, Vida, I don't know how we can proceed with the fact that this is not, either this is not correct, or I shouldn't have been participating, based on the council's direction. So, that's my, that's my thoughts. I, I would still like, though, if possible, to open up discussion for the public, and we will, and just to have the discussion and talk about this. But if it's the direction of the council, you know, it's, it's up to the council. That's why, that's what the ad hoc committee is for, to bring back for the full complement of the council to decide what to do. There is no, you know, no keeping things secret from the whole council. We bring it all forward, so that it'll be open to the public, so we can discuss it in front of everybody. So, that's, that's all I have to say.
I'm actually not comfortable moving forward, knowing there was a bias, a member that sat in on the meeting. So, I don't know where we go from here.
Bill, if I can ask a question. And Frank, thank you for catching that. Because I, if you would have asked, I would have thought that Chung's name was listed. You know, the last time we did a charter review, we did have Chung and I on that committee. It was listed. I don't know who did the appointment at the time. But it was the two of us, and we also used two ex-council members, Sherman Capi and George Ray. We had two attorneys involved, Bill, you were one of them, and we had Pam Lee.
She's like that.
Okay. But, you know, the, the process is that we, we had a very thorough discussion on the things that we, you know, brought forward at that time. But the question I have, Bill, for you is that whether Chung's name was left off inadvertently, whatever, I thought it was there. But as the chair of the charter review committee, or any person that's head of any of the committees, they have the ability to pull somebody on. It doesn't have to be appointed, you know, by the mayor at that point. Isn't that true?
Well, again, as I mentioned before-
Along with, we don't have a majority of the council.
Correct. That's correct. As long as there is less than a quorum, then another council member could sit in and participate in a discussion, if an ad hoc working group is just one other council member, as well as if any other-
But not as a serial meeting, you know, having one council member, then another one, and another one.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. So, in that situation, there's no violation of, you know, any laws at this point?
No. And, and to follow up on what council member Yokiyama was bringing up, again, no violation under the Brown Act or the open meeting laws, but as a policy matter, if there is concern, as has been expressed by members of the council, that Mayor Protem Vo had participated, just because he wasn't identified as part of the group, then the council can choose what the next course of action would be, whether it is to continue, or start over, or going forward, and I know that the city clerk will confirm, of whether there was an actual action to have Mayor Protem Vo participate or not. But even if not, it could just be one member of the council going forward from here too. It is within the council's prerogative how they would like to address it.
Real quick, Bruce, thank you for your comments. I appreciate what you're trying to say, and what you're trying to do. But again, the comments that were made by the other council members here, leads me to believe that there's things, that they think there's some foul play in act here. So, I would actually recommend that we just stop this now. And then, if we decide to move forward with another ad hoc committee comprised of you, I'll be good with that. I'm okay with that. So, again, you know, if these concerns are out there, the last thing I want to do is be part of that concern. So, I would, I would say that I'm comfortable with not moving forward with it either. Just so that, you know, the public knows that this wasn't something that we're trying to sneak through, or whatever. We're just trying to do some work, so the public can have a say in this, so they can have, you know, some voice in this. But if it's a concern, then I, I'd be more than happy to stop this process today.
Does he need consensus on that?
Bruce, but you know, the, I understand the amendment one was something brand new that your committee came up with. But the amendment two, that water approval required for further change, can we look at the amendment two and three?
Okay. But the process is, is that we were going to open up for public comments, allow each person, if they want to speak each one separately, they'll have-
But I, I kind of agree with Lynda Johnson, that having elected mayor positions, how is that really going to change anything in the city?
The council can do that, you know, and take that decision. But no matter what, we still have to allow for public comments.
There was a recommendation by Chung to just stop, stop right now? Is that consensus?
You still have to have public comments.
Okay.
And if there's no more questions, I'll open public comments.
Well, let's go ahead and open the public comments.
Mr. City Attorney, do we have to have-
For the mayor's, you know-
Are we required to have a public comment before a council member makes a motion?
The matter has been opened up and discussed. It would be most prudent to allow for public comments.
Okay, so-
So, yes.
I can't, I can't make a motion to table this right now.
Well, you could, but there, but it has been brought before the council for discussion, there has been discussion, and it would be my recommendation to allow for public comments on this item, and then afterwards.
I actually would like to have the public comment on this after everything they've-
And I, and I just wanted to have clarification, so, so all the residents understand, or all the attendees understand why we're having public comment. Thank you.
Understood.
Okay, I, I don't have any cards.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, are we opening public comments just on item number one, or on all the items?
Item one. The first item I have listed is-
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
If the, if the concern is that the whole ad hoc committee discuss all three items, right? And we're going just to take one at a time, and still discuss the other two, I, I actually would rather just combine all three of them, and have public comments for all three. Because the concern is, this ad hoc committee that was formed, there's questions about it. And so, we're just going to talk about one, and then move on. It sounds like the overall concern is the whole committee presenting this to the council. So, I would, I would recommend, and I, just to go, just have them have public comments on the whole thing. I mean, do we need to discuss items two and items three on here? Or should we just go ahead and open public comments for this whole agenda item as a whole? Listen to public comment, bring it back to council, and we can give direction to this council on what to do.
Okay. Well, before we can answer that, Vida, you need to discuss the timeframe, if we're going to get any one of these on the ballot.
No, I understand that.
There's a restriction, you know, for just the cleanup language, for instance. That's the third item.
I think we should just get into the public comment.
Public comments for the whole agenda, right, Frank?
Oh yeah, I agree with what you said. Let's just get to the public comment, and hear from the residents, so that we can-
Then Bruce, do, do you want to ask council has any question for item number two and three?
I couldn't hear you, Lynda.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, if I may, just very quickly, the deadline to place any, the final deadline to place any ballot measures on the ballot for the March 4th, 2025 election, would be Friday, December 6. We don't recommend waiting until that date. We recommend if the council is going to move forward with placing any final ballot measures on the ballot, that they do so by the Monday, November 4th, city council special meeting. So, the city council has some time on these matters, but we recommend not waiting any later than Monday, November 4th.
Okay. Well, here, and I think we have consensus to go to public comments on all three items at this point. First person I have listed is Martin Grossman.
I am a 53-year resident of Cerritos. My wife asked Google, how many cities in LA County have elected mayors? Of the 88 cities, 23 cities have elected mayors. For example, Long Beach and the city of LA, that's about 23%. As was said by somebody else, I'm eagerly listening for the benefit of the city of Cerritos residents to have an elected mayor. Please remember that this issue came up before, in regards to term limits, and the residents voted down increasing term limits, Prop H. I sent an email to city manager, Mr. Lopez, and he agrees that it would be possible that under the present proposal, one person could be an elected mayor for eight years, and then be an elected city council person for eight years. And this means that this person would be on the city council for 16 years, and that doesn't count whatever they may have been previously. Now, I acknowledge that council person Barrows was appointed to the council, and I was told that the same rules apply to Mr. Barrows. Another interesting thing is, is for everybody to acknowledge that council person Yokiyama has not been on mayor during his years on the city council, but somehow, council person Barrows has been mayor once, council person Vo once, and council person Solanke has been mayor three times. As for ad hoc committee members, very interesting. Council person Vo is on 10 committees, council person Barrows is on nine, council person Solanke is on seven, council person Johnson is on four, and what? Council person Yokiyama is not on any committee. If in the wisdom or stupidity of this council, I hope you have many meetings on this, daytime and evenings, also in other locations other than the council chambers, since for some people, it's difficult to get into. Maybe the senior center, or the CCPA. Thank you. Boy, what a boondoggle this is. I'm leaving.
Thank you, Marty. Next is Gail Grossman.
This city is 68 years old. We have been residents for 53 years. Wonderful active years, until the last 18 months. I have never been as unhappy as I have been with this council, and the devious tricks they have pulled in order to allow themselves to get more years on council. In June of 2022, the residents voted overwhelmingly to you term limits. You probably had 75 to 100 people speak at the meeting at CCPA in opposition, but did that make any difference? You didn't listen. You were a resident first, but your checkbook and your benefits were more popular than the residents who voted for you, or your greediness to appoint someone who would go along with your ideas. It's obvious that what you are doing, and have done, is the very best to stop. Councilman Yokiyama, who has been a council person for eight years, has never been mayor, which is really, in reality, a ceremonial job. Not any more power than Mr. Vo, Solanke, or Barrows. Think it's Harry's. Again, it is a game of, I am better than you, and shall we be big boys and forget seven years ago, and be equal to all who have been elected by residents? Remember, who elected you, and who can campaign against you? March of '25 is just around the corner. Cerritos is a democracy. Cerritos democracy is at stake. We are not a dynasty.
Thank you, Gail. Mel Cortez?
Mel Cortez, Cerritos resident. How will this ceremonial position, I'm talking about one for the mayor, how will this help our city? Or the question should be, who will it benefit? How will this help to stop CCPA from losing millions every year? How will having an elected mayor with no change to their powers or duties help the residents? It's a waste of time. Our city council should work to make things better for our residents, not for themselves. They have given themselves extra years already. Two of you will have, by the time you finish, 10 years, which were supposed to be eight. Another benefit is two. And now, trying to give themselves an extra eight years to be elected to a ceremonial- Another benefit is two, and now trying to give themselves an extra eight years to be elected to a ceremonial, ceremonial position with no extra powers or duties of what the current mayor has now, maybe just to sit in the middle. This will just confuse voters, too. They will know who's running for council, who's running for mayor. Just to allow an ego-loving council members, yes, because most likely it'll be council members running for, for mayor, to run and to win a mayor's seat, sometimes in the middle of the four-year terms. Then, if you are in your second year, run for mayor, win, and have taxpayer funds, fund an expensive special election to replace a vacant position. What are they going to tell voters? Vote for me, for me or Cerritos, where I have no extra powers, no duties, but I can tell my friends I have a title. And it cost me thirty thousand dollars to become mayor. And another sixty thousand, no taxpayer money for the special election to replace my council seat if I was already on the council. We voted for term limits twice, but now some elected officials want another eight years. How did this come about? Did someone meet in a dark basement to brainstorm, how can I give myself more years in this council to get lifetime benefits? This was the best they could come with, more of the same, but only elected? Maybe we could go back to the place where we met, that they met in a dark basement somewhere and try harder to do something for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mel. Next is Jay Gray.
Uh-oh, you got your hands caught in the cookie jar. So this basically all started, it looks like, with one individual, an unelected individual, an individual who was rejected forcefully by the voters the last time he ran for office. And as Mr. Cortez mentioned, and it seemed like Mr. Barros alluded to, that this is just basically about getting it on the ballot to be able to avoid term limits that voters in this city have voted on twice, not once, but twice. And the ironic thing about this, at the beginning of the last agenda item, Mr. Barros said something along the lines of the state not following the laws they pass. And here you have a council, one-time exceptions to name things in the city after father figures. We have the spirit of the law, Mr. Vo, with the art in public places. And we have the treasurer position that's also on this, that Mr. Barros was involved with way back when he was on council years ago. When the city clerk was appointed, there is no agenda stating that a treasurer was appointed. There are no minutes stating that a treasurer was appointed. Yet Mr. Barros said in that same basement room that this agenda item has come out of. Coincidence? I don't know. It just seems some, that some great things are happening when he's involved. So, you know, you basically have a situation now where all that's going to happen is you're going to close the item down. You're going to go back, reshuffle the papers, and present it again, whether Mr. Vo is on it or not. And the interesting thing is, Mr. Vo, Mr. Barros, the city attorney, the city clerk, it sounds like you were all in that meeting, and you guys didn't even know who was supposed to be there. And yet you want to rewrite the charter, and you don't even know who's supposed to be in that meeting? How much credibility does that give you to do this? It just goes to show that your focus wasn't on what was best for the residents. Your focus was in to drive your own personal agenda. That was it, your own personal agenda. It's never been about the city, it's been about yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Our next speaker is Seiya Switzer.
Good evening. I wrote my remarks very brief when I got here this evening. I had looked at the agenda item earlier in the week, and some of it I'm okay with, and some of it I'm not. And now I'm even less okay with anything. I thank Frank and I thank Linda for their questions and their concerns. And I thank Chung also for having the concern about who is really on this committee. And what I saw, because I printed out all twenty-five pages, that it was a committee of one. It was a committee of Bruce. I also noted, and thank Marty Grossman, he went into detail about how Frank is not on any committees. Linda is on four, and the rest of you are on a lot more. So I think you need to look at what's going on, some of you in your house, before you try to do other things. The amendment two, I'll do that because it's really fast. Yes, I would, I would support that any future change in election date would need to be, go to the voters to decide if they want to change it again. It's been sort of like musical chairs, or just when a majority of the council decides they want to extend their terms. So regarding this whole thing about a mayor, I oppose that proposed amendment so strongly. A city the size of Cerritos does not need an elected mayor who would have no more powers nor duties than the person currently serving her or his, and we haven't had a her in a while, one year as mayor, usually on an equitable, in the past, rotational basis. In addition, having an elected mayor would completely circumvent what Cerritos voters approved in two thousand twenty-two regarding term limits. It would allow a person to serve on the council for sixteen years, not the eight approved by the voters. Again, it's just another attempt to lengthen terms by some of you. And I think not only should this not go farther tonight, particularly amendment one. I don't think it should ever come back, and I think it's absolutely ridiculous. And some of you really need to look at what you're trying to do and why you are. And I'm really, I expected a whole lot of people here tonight about this and not about some earlier stuff. So you better go back to square one and don't even consider amendment one as part of that. Two and three, if you want to consider for those in the future, that's fine.
Thank you, Seiya. Colleen Ondridge.
I could hear the whispering as I was going up, because my hearing is still good at almost, what am I going to be, seventy-five? My husband's going to be eighty in September. And as I said before, we're fifty-plus residents here in the city of Cerritos, and we love our city. Please, and thank you, Linda, thank you, Frank. I, and thank you, Vo, Chung, for seeing how ridiculous this actually is. And I agree, it should not be brought up and go over it again and again and again and again, and take time up and dollars spent for something that should not be. I also believe very strongly that the rotation needs to be a real rotation. I know that Councilman Yokiyama has a lot of knowledge, and he has a lot to share with this city. And by dissing him and not acknowledging him and not putting him on any committees is wrong. I know that there was a problem way back, but Mayor Solanke, you've been mayor now three times. Let it go, come on. Enough of this infighting. It's ridiculous. Thank you, Linda, for having a mind that points out the absurdity of some of these actions. It just takes up our time, and it is not for the residents. We're not thinking about the residents. It's about power. It's about money. It's about lifetime benefits. Please, think about the residents. This is absolutely ridiculous. And I agree with whatever everybody else has said, and I'm going to finish up even early. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. And my last card is Carrot. Jashon? Chauhan, excuse me.
Mayor Solanke, council members, I too, I'm against all of this. I don't want a mayor. You guys need to get over your juvenile behavior. Find it within your heart to rotate mayors properly. We're a small city, we don't need this. Because if you want a mayor, why don't we have trusty areas? Why not that? Because if you're going to put proposals out there, give us alternatives, not one vision. There's an underlying reason. I know that the underlying reason has to do with general city and charter city. That's the underlying reason. You don't like state of California, that's your problem. Embrace the spirit of who we are, who our customers, where do we collect our money from? You seem to have no problem taking money from the state when it was time to do so. Now you have a problem trying to concoct rules where you can avoid being, how can I say, ruled by the state. I understand what these rules are, and I understand what the charter is. So get over it. No more mayors. This idea that you guys can stop an election, but the future council can't? No. Play by the rules. I am very upset that this was trying to be snuck in. You can do better. You can be explicit. There is a lot at stake in our state, within our city. Yes, there, the rules may not be fair. But when a civil society, you accept the rules and you work forcefully to change the rules within the system, not bypass them. I've known too many damn lawyers who look at the law and say, oh, well, it doesn't explicitly say this. There's the intent of law, spirit of the law. And it's not just in this council. I like to read law. I like to read, know why it was created, what the intent was. But those who want to cheat the system will say, it doesn't say this, so I can go ahead and do that. And I find it very abhorrent, whether it's in this city council or at the school board. Do right by the people. We want you. We like the charter that it was. The founding fathers were far more smarter than you guys are. They created the charter in a way that was fair, meaningful, and representative of the people. In your council, can I ask you, how, did you look in the mirror? Was there any person of any pigmentation within your group? Do you understand the feelings of people who live in this city? Or is this something you just want to shove down their throat? Thank you.
Thank you, Carrot. Al.
I'm very impressed with the residents here. I think they can all see through that the real purpose here is to do an end run around the, the new term limits so that you have eight years council, eight years as mayor. Let me give you some unsolicited advice. If you want to push this through, because just like all the residents who came here saw through it, I'm sure residents at large will see through it, there's just an end run around the term limits. So the way to do that, if you really want to, is to make the council districts, and then the mayor is citywide. Then there's actually, then it actually looks like there's a purpose to having a mayor. Otherwise, it's, it's just so obvious. Take that into account next time you meet.
Thank you, Al. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council at this point? CNN will come back to counsel for a direction.
If I may?
Yes, go ahead.
So thank you. I did want to listen to the public comments and have discussions and so forth, and I appreciate everyone that came out and said what they said. The ad hoc committee was developed so we can research, understand these directions that council gave to look into it. And in doing so, we also learned during the process what the options are, what their issues are, and so forth. And just to let you know, I also saw that this was an extension of term limits. And I don't agree with the fact that we're going to be extending term limits. But even though I didn't agree with it, it was our job, at least I thought it was my job on the committee, to bring it forward to the public, to have that decision made, and have the council discuss that. And so regardless of how I felt, it was direction of the council, bring it forward for discussion. And it's a healthy discussion. We heard a lot of good, good comments, good recommendations, good, good questions. But I did also see this as an extension of term limits to allow council members to not have just two terms, but four terms. And for some of us up here, it could be even more than that, because it resets everything when we, when we had the charter amendment last time. So I appreciate the comments, and my motion would be, is to table this item, but because of the overlying concern, to bring back the other two items back to the ad hoc committee, to bring back to the council for discussion. That would be, that would be my motion. And that ad hoc committee would, would be Bruce Barrows, since it's what's, says on here.
Can I ask for a different motion to just discontinue the mayor part? You know, we did exactly what we were asked to do, is to bring it back. And just to address a couple of concerns, I have said all along that when this term is up, I'm done. There's health issues in my family that I have to address. There is, I, I'm not going to run again, period. So it doesn't matter what's on the table. The other part is that if we were just to look at, you know, the mayor's spot, and let's say there was support for it, the only people that could run for it and not have a problem on the council is Frank and Linda. Because you're talking about, you know, twenty twenty-nine. We, I don't know where Chung and Ondridge are going to be at that point, but there's really no consideration given as to who, you know, would be a candidate. The conversation I started to earlier is, I am going back to the early nineties, is that there was no appetite for an elected mayor. This is the first time that we had consensus to even look at it at a very superficial level. From my own personal perspective, I didn't expect this thing to go forward, you know, from tonight, but there's an obligation to bring it back. So that's why I'm asking, so instead of table it to allow it to come back at another future date, just take it off the table entirely.
That, I, I did say table the mayor section and the other two.
Yeah, no, the other two, you said, so, you know, go back and bring, bring that back.
Yeah, but I think the overall concern is that the ad hoc committee that was formed, where I wasn't, I was enlisted, also dealt with those two items. So, you know, to make it.
Just to resolve that, we can have the mayor. It's not on the agenda.
I cannot appoint tonight, it's not in agenda, so how am I going to appoint?
Right. So.
I have comments.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I think the whole process was just flawed. Let's just be real with that. We may meet the legal requirements, but we owe it to our residents to be transparent. We don't ask them to trust us, we have to earn their trust. So moving forward with these proposed three amendments is not the way we should treat our residents. Do we really want transparency? We should. So I don't think we should even move forward on any of these three. There's no urgency to place it on the March twenty twenty-five ballot. As members of an ad hoc committee, you gotta be a little more diligent than just saying, oh, let's let, you know, bring it up to the council to discuss. It's got to have a little bit more teeth in it, a little bit more staff report in it, a little bit more research that needs to be done before bringing it to council like this. Thank you. Thank you.
I made a motion. And I don't know, there's a second if not.
What was the motion again? Can you repeat?
Motion was just go ahead and table the mayor position and have the ad hoc committee revisit the other two items and bring it back to council.
I second that. Okay, would you call or call?
Thank you. I apologize. At this time, there is a motion on the floor made by Councilmember Barrows and seconded by Mayor, I'm sorry, Voe and Mayor, uh, seconded by Mayor Solanke. And this time, a roll call vote will be conducted. Council and agency member Barrows.
Hi.
Council agency member Johnson.
I'm sorry, I have clarification. So Councilmember Voe is saying that he is concerned with the whole process, that it was flawed, that he wasn't supposed to be on the committee, but now he wants to make a motion just to remove item number one with no concerns over items two and three. I'm a little confused if he can explain that.
Sure, I'll like to explain that. I did say that they're going to bring it back to the ad hoc committee, which consists of just Bruce Barrows, and I won't be on there to revisit everything that was discussed and bring it back to the council for discussion. So because it was, in your words, flawed, um, I would like to redo the whole thing with just Bruce.
But if we're going to redo the whole thing, it should be redone all the way, like a new appointment, like the mayor should make a new appointment to the Charter Review Committee.
No, there's one, one member can make, don't need the two members. Bruce Barrows can run as a chair and run the, uh, committee.
So it's going back to Bru, I'm just trying to understand this. So it's going to go back to Bruce, which he's already talked about it, without Chung. I don't know. That doesn't make sense to me. It really doesn't make sense.
Well, that's the motion, right? You made a motion and I second that. Uh, you said I, so we have.
There was a roll call vote being taken.
Council and agency member Johnson.
I, I feel we should scrap the whole thing, so I'm going to say no.
Council and agency member Yokayama.
I agree with Councilmember Johnson, no.
Mayor Protam and Vice Chair Voe.
Aye.
Mayor and Chair Solanke.
Aye.
The motion passes by a vote of three, two.
That's a disservice to our residents.
Okay, uh, next item is the, uh, legislative item, uh, 10A.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. We do not have any items to report.
Please, I have some respect for each other. Let's not be calling names here. Please. Thank you. Go ahead. Uh, 10A.
Uh, thank you. Uh, we do not have any items to report on either 10A or 10B.
Okay. 11A.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, noting the cancellation of the August 8th city council meeting, I'd just like to note that city staff is currently making preparations for the annual National Night Out event that will take place on that evening, Thursday, August 8th, uh, in conjunction with the Concert Under the Stars event at Heritage Park. Uh, it's also an event for city employees, so just wanted to, um, make a note of the, uh, our next regular city council meeting will be Thursday, August 22nd.
Okay. Council Communication, I'll start with Linda.
You. On July 13, I attended and was also the event chair for the Philippine American Friendship Day held at Kenaby Park. There were about 3,000 attendees celebrating the Filipino culture, featuring food booths, merchandise booths, and entertainment. Thank you to Supervisor Janice Hahn for sponsoring this annual event. On July 15, I attended, along with Robert Lopez and Kristen Agala, a tour of Sapphire Industries located here in the city of Cerritos. It was a great experience to hear and learn about their business, and hopefully in the future, we're able to continue to grow, to get to know more of our business stakeholders in our city. On July 15, I attended our annual volunteer banquet held at Sierra, at the Sierra Room. Thank you to the many volunteers we have at our senior center, library, and our volunteers on patrol. Hopefully next year, um, we can also include our neighborhood watch captains, which was brought up earlier in public comments by Mel Cortez. On July 17, I attended the Contract Cities Board Meeting hosted by LA County Fire Department. And I'd also like to do a special shout out to our Los Angeles County Sheriff's Major Crimes Bureau, the Organized Retail Crimes Task Force on recovering two bronze statues that were stolen almost 10 years ago. And thank you to our Community Safety Division and our Cerritos Sheriff's Station for their assistance as well. That's it.
Frank?
Yes, I, um, I also attended the Philippine American Friendship Day. You know, thank you to Supervisor Janice Hahn for co-sponsoring the event with our Filipino community, including Nafa, of the Los Angeles region. You know, it's great for our city that, um, it's great for our city that our city was selected to host this event, celebrating the Filipino community, which is a robust, vibrant part of our city of Cerritos, which is over 60% API. And of those over 30,000 Cerritos residents, the biggest group of Asian Americans is the Filipino community. So we, we, uh, are recognizing the fact of the diversity of our city and the importance of the diversity of our city. And it's always great to have events like this, uh, um, celebrating, um, a significant part of our Cerritos community. And what an honor it is for our city that the chair of the Philippine American Friendship Day, what is our own council member, Linda Johnson, working together with Janice Hahn and with Nafa, um, of the, of the greater Los Angeles area. And she brought together numerous, uh, elected officials from throughout, um, the county, um, who attended, who attended the event and saw, uh, what Cerritos is doing in our city for our residents. That same day, I also attended the Community Resource Fair put on by our own Assembly Member Sharon Quirk Silva, in the city of Fullerton. And it, you know, it made me think that, you know, I hope that we can, you know, all it takes is the city hall reaching out to her and letting her know, hey, um, we're ready for a community resource fair, uh, in our neck of the woods as well. But she had the community resource fair and it was clear that she had all the, all the, uh, resources of her office available to the community at that community resource fair. So, and there was many residents there, learning from the different agencies and organizations and, and, uh, charities and governmental agencies providing, uh, needed information to the attendees. Uh, and I'm proud that there were, in addition to the, uh, staff of the Assembly Member Sharon Quirk Silva, there, there were also, volunteers and interns that she, uh, helps give, uh, she gives, um, she helps train and educate the youth to be of service to the community. So, um, that was, that day was just a great day to see, what Philippine American Friendship Day and what Sharon Quirk Silva's, uh, Community Resource Fair, what a meaningful, significant, um, contribution can happen in just one, uh, one day in our, in our community. Um, another thing that, um, I did was I had a meeting today as the president of Apamo, the Asian Pacific American Municipal Officials, which is the constituency group under the National League of Cities. And we had our presidents, our constituency group presidents meeting. And it's such a, uh, powerful, awesome thing to be sharing, best practices with the constituency group presidents from the other constituency groups, the LGBTQ plus, the Hispanic group, the Black group, uh, the Indigenous Peoples Group, uh, the Women's Group. And we were all sharing with each other on this monthly meeting that I have the honor of being on about what we're all doing as the constituency group presidents for these local officials, for these, um, local officials serving cities, towns, and villages throughout the country. What we're all doing to help our, our constituency groups and work for our constituency groups. And that's why I'm just glad that our city of Cerritos is at the table with National League of Cities, uh, an organization that has over 2,800 cities working together to work together to, to use our collective power, um, to deal with, uh, higher government. So we have local control. Today, we were talking about these unfunded mandates that Sacramento is imposing upon our, our city of Cerritos of less, less than 50,000 residents. And they're imposing these unfunded mandates on us. And it's not fair, and we need to work together, uh, with our other cities, towns, and villages, whether it's across the country or whether it's here in our state of California, or whether it's in, in, in our county of Los Angeles, so that, um, we're not treated unfairly. So I'm glad that this council today directed staff, directed you, Robert, and staff to go back to the state and we're not going to just, uh, take this unfunded mandate and, and just ignore it and, and let our Cerritos taxpayer dollars be wasted because the government, the state government told us to do something. We need to, uh, uh, deal with this unfunded mandate, and I'm glad that the council agreed with this proactive measure of getting together with similarly situated neighboring cities and working together to get compensated for this unfunded mandate that we dealt with earlier in the city council meeting. But that's what these regional organizations are all about, whether it's SCAG, National League of Cities, League of California Cities, California Contract Cities, Independent Cities Association. There's so much value in our city of Cerritos being a part of this, being at the table on this because, for example, um, because we are members of the National League of Cities and because we are members of the United States of Conference of Mayors, that gives our council members the opportunity to have additional meetings with our federal leaders, our federal, uh, legislators. And those additional meetings allow us to go to our congress member, allow us to go to our senators additional times, and the squeaky wheel gets to grease. And that's why for the, the relatively, um, reasonable amount of money that this city council budgets for the council members to participate in these state organizations and national organizations, this reasonable amount of money, that's why we had the great announcement just a few weeks ago by our city manager to city hall and to the residents of Cerritos, that our congress member awarded us $5 million. She confirmed the grant of $5 million to, uh, keep moving forward, the completion of the Del Amo Bridge project. That's why it, 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 it puzzles me and, and, um, whenever we question about whether council, our council members should be involved regionally or throughout the state or throughout the country because just that one example of these council members talking with our congress member in United States, in, in, in Washington DC, is just one more way we lock down well, the $5 million grant we just got a few months ago. So let's keep doing those kinds of things, whether it's money from the federal government or money from the state government or money from Los, from Los Angeles County and from our supervisors. It's, we have to be at the table. We have to be the squeaky wheel. And let's get more money for our city of Cerritos, including money for the unfunded mandate. Thank you, Robert. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Bruce?
At the same time of the event that Linda and Frank were talking about, I was at the ICA conference in San Diego. And I'll just bring up one of the items. It had to do with the FBI making a presentation pointing out about nation-states as well as local people hacking into cities and the consequences. And we just, I think, received an email from, um, the National League of Cities that talked about this very same thing going on, but they also point out exactly what happened down there is that the FBI will come and do a presentation to our staff, but they'll also do training to certify that we can, uh, be up to date on all the, uh, abilities, you know, to stop it. And that just, you know, the most recent thing just came out in the last two days. Uh, I would like to have staff, you know, look into it and see if we can assign a staff member to participate, you know, for that training. And I believe part of it's online and part is that they'll, they'll come. But outside of that, that's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you. Chung?
Thank you. I have nothing.
Okay. I just attended the volunteer recognition dinner, which was already mentioned, but we did have a meeting this morning with, uh, Sheriff Department regarding Contract Law Enforcement Bureau to go over our budget and where are we really spending our money. And I think Darrell, would you please be able to give that report? Or maybe Robert? Or Robert, Robert too?
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Yes, as mentioned, uh, this morning, for about three hours, you as the mayor and Mayor Protam Voe, along with C Manager Robert Lopez and other members of the executive team, met with the LASD Contract Law Enforcement Services Bureau to discuss the city's contract. As you know, we just renewed the five-year service contract with the LASD. Uh, today's meeting was about how the city spends its almost $19 million with the LASD. And I want to thank you for taking the time to understand the contract. So, uh, the purpose of the meeting today was to, uh, talk about the service level provided by the sheriffs and then what goes into all those costs. So what most people don't realize is that the cost of a deputy, or I should say the service time for deputy, because as we spoke about a lot this morning, we don't purchase deputies. We purchase blocks of time. And those items for, like, say, deputy is, uh, almost $330,000 per deputy. Obviously, a deputy does not make $330,000 or they would have no recruitment problems whatsoever. But within that cost is the overheads, and that's what we talked about today, is, uh, the cost of the deputy and all the overheads that go involved, uh, with that fee, which would include, uh, portions of supervision, portions of equipment, clerical staff, uh, retirements, benefits, those sort of things that all go into it. So it was very important to understand how the county collects the money, what they spend it on, and where we can maximize the service. Part of the things that came out, uh, we were looking at was, uh, a credit perhaps to the city for the use of the facility and/or some fees that were being charged that, uh, were not being charged to other, uh, agencies because Cerritos is unique, as we talk about all the time. Uh, Cerritos is the only sheriff station, Cerritos Sheriff's Station is the only sheriff station that serves one community. All other sheriff stations are regional. They serve multiple communities and/or county areas. So we're very unique. I say all the time, uh, thanks to the, the wisdom of council, what we've hired here is the Cerritos Police Department, staffed and managed by the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. And so, uh, we went over also all the services and benefits for working with the LASD, homicide, SWAT, all the county services, the crime lab, all those type of things too. So I want to take time just to thank you for, uh, understanding that and making sure the residents are getting, uh, the high quality of service from the LASD and, uh, that, uh, all, any questions that you had were resolved.
It was, uh, I think it was a great point brought by you regarding the captain's salary. And also the, I think, uh, either Drew or, uh, our finance manager regarding the using our facility. Because we're still maintaining our own station where the Lakewood and the other cities, our counties paying for it. So if there is any, I think they were going to get back to us regarding those two items. So if there is any, I think they were going to get back to us regarding those two items. It was a good point you brought up regarding the captain's salary. And Chung had a lot of input in there since his-
Yes, I would just like to add that the savings that was made by Mayor Protim Chung was talking about any savings realized would be rolled back into the public safety program. So it's not the city looking to return money into the coffers, but to enhance the program and the services to the community. So that was a very wise use of time.
And I mean, I learned a lot today. It was, I thought, why are we paying $18, $19 million? But by the time they explained to you, I think every dollar we're paying to the sheriff department is worth it for our citizens and our residents. Thank you. That's all we have tonight, and I guess we have closed session. Bill?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, there are two close session items, items 12A and 12B. Both are conference with labor negotiators pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.6. The agency negotiators are Robert A. Lopez, city manager, Patricia Leva, Personnel Risk Manager, and Joseph Larson, the city attorney's office. The first item is with employees, organization AFSMI Local 619. And the second is with unrepresented employees, full-time exempt. And with that, we can recess to closed session.
Thank you. And I'd like to tell council, without interruption, Pendrick, go to the council to-
Close session.
Thank you.